All right, welcome to the December 3rd Council Workshop. This is going to be kind of a bit of an open format. This is for a proposal that has landed in the lap of the community. So, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of punch right off to Tom. Everybody's getting first introductions to this, so I don't know anything.
Thank you. This is a matter that I've been dealing with since, I think, 2010 or so. So, it's been an ongoing conversation and it's frankly a ready-made item, a perfect item, for a workshop. Before anyone invests further time or effort, or I speak on behalf of the town, I really, I think it's important for all involved to get a sense and gauge the council's interest and appetite moving forward. So, Jim and Kathy Wellhand are here this evening, and Melissa Murphy, their attorney is here as well, and let me pull another chair up. So, if you permit, I think it'd be best to bring them up and hear from them what the proposal is, and then perhaps get into some discussion. Come on up.
Thank you, Tom.
It's such a small world.
We grew up as neighbors.
I used to skate in his little pond right in front of his house.
That is a small world. I love that. It's really cool.
So, just by way of introduction, we did provide the council some materials that Melissa put together. I've also, as part of that, projected up here on the screen for the public's benefit and those in the audience, a quick schematic that shows the current makeup and ownership of property. And so, just for orientation, if I could, Melissa, before you get started.
Sure.
This large parking area is Heard Park in Pine Point, off King Street and Avenue 5. The Wellhand lot is this lot, essentially 50 feet wide and extends from King Street all the way to...
High Watermark.
High Watermark is shown there as the kind of the frontal dune, but I think it probably technically extends a bit further.
Yes, it does. We've got a picture here that shows that.
And the town owns the adjacent lot that runs, similar dimension, I suspect. We've not done the full title work and deed research, but by all appearances, they look to be almost mirror images of each other, if you will. And just by way of historical background, I've not done full exhaustive deed research, but this obviously is a natural extension of Avenue 4 that is, we've not chosen to construct. And I've traced it back to at least a survey in 1875 that shows that in-town ownership. Clearly, as part of this would be full due diligence to understand marketable title and the like on both properties. So, again, I've not done exhaustive research, but I'm pretty sure that this has been in-town ownership for quite a long time. And just the last piece I'd say is, you can see throughout our property, there are little footpaths that have kind of been created over time. And so, certainly the public purpose that served historically and likely in the future is for access to the beach. There's any number of other access points, obviously, the big parking lot next door, but that's one of the purposes that it serves. So, that's kind of the backdrop to this, and I'd best if Melissa could be more specifically about the proposal.
Thank you very much, Tom, and thank you all for having us here tonight. I think Tom already introduced us, and I'm Melissa Murphy and Jim and Kathy Wellhand. Your materials for the workshop, I think, and the map shows the two abiding properties, and Kathy and Jim did bring this picture, which really doesn't show anything. It's essentially the same. So, we've got that, if you have any questions about it. Neither of these two strips really comply with today's zoning or really optimal land use. The Wellhand's home, I think if you saw in the materials that Jim prepared, have been there for a very long time, between the development of the town parking lot and time, and the effects of time, the property needs some extensive work, maybe even rebuilding. But because they're legally non-conforming use, but still a non-conforming use, there's not a lot that they could do at this time. So, it just seemed logical to Jim, who you'll find is a very logical person, that reconfiguring the town's property and their property could result in maybe two or three legally created lots. And that could be to the benefit of both the town and obviously the Wellhands, and could lead to a lot of public benefit as well. Obviously, any transaction that's to occur, as Tom said, would have to be completed with full due diligence on both parties. It would have to be fair, obviously, to both parties. We'd have, and there are a number of factors that would, we'd want to look into, appraisal, zoning, engineering, just to name a few. But it really doesn't make sense to, for either the town or the Wellhands, to spend any more money unless there is the appetite or the willingness from the town to enter into such a transaction. So, that's what we are here for, just to present that possibility and to just gauge your interest and reaction. We'll be happy to answer any questions and hear your thoughts. And we, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
And I'll just advance the slide, it was in the council's packet, but this shows kind of a quick version, if you will, initial version of how that land swap might work. Essentially, it'd be for us to switch the front and the back ownership. And so, we would each be consolidating our ownership rather than all the way through from King Street to the, well, High Watermark, whatever it is. You're kind of concentrating ownership on the front portion and the back portion, if you will.
I don't understand what you mean by that. Are you proposing that the town give up the front portion of one for the front portion of theirs and take the front portion of the Wellhand?
The predicament the Wellhands find themselves in is that currently their lot is 50 feet, legally non-conforming. But to do the sort of work that they think they need to do, they need 80 feet, minimum frontage. And so, it's a...
What, 80?
And the only way for them to accomplish that is to look to one or the other butter, and we're both. And so, the, I guess it's come forward to kind of focus on this property line as the most, most natural way to proceed, if we do anything, as opposed to moving into the parking lot.
Ed, my thought on the thing is that, first, let me plead guilty. I am an environmentally concerned person. I have lots, lots, lots of bad aspects, but that's just one of them. But as I look at it, it's a small piece of land. It's, if you're bird nesting there, it's of great value. If you're not, it's, it's a small piece of land where you can't do a lot of good. If there were two houses in the back lot, you can get a road. The road was continued, and we're willing to do that. That road is built by a fellow from Canada who built his private road. He used to rent our house in summertime when the kids would go to school and go to college and stuff with. So, you could put a lot, a house from that front area, a house on King Street, and there could be a third house on the front lot, which is what, it's where the other houses adjacently are located. And so, the town would have three taxable properties rather than one. So, I think it's to the town's benefit. It's, it's not a, it's a odd mix, which is what the world is made of, I guess, but it's not a very functional use of the land right now.
Tom, could you show what the access would be and where those two other lots would be located?
Sure. So, this is Dooneville Lane, this is a public street?
Yep.
Currently. To, what Mr. Wellhand is referring to is that all of this was concentrated in their ownership.
Right.
They would be sufficient sized to at least have a second lot on that property.
Right. To do so... It's in the lot, I think, towards in the roadhouse.
To do those, to do so, we would have to, we'd have, they would have to establish funds, which could be accomplished by a natural extension of Doonefield through this lot. And in doing so, potentially, the town could benefit by a third lot. That would be totally at our election. We may wish to expand the parking lot.
I was gonna ask, is there essential...
There are certainly permit issues regardless of how you choose to develop it, but I've not even considered, it's very seldom that we're at maximum capacity. We have overflow across King Street. It's not as if we have a burning desire to expand that lot, but that's an option that we could and should consider if this goes forward.
And the swap...
We're having a parking issue.
And the swap, in other words, that lower portion would also go all the way to the water line, correct?
Yes.
The swap. So, we would gain some beach, so to speak, publicly owned beach, too?
To the extent these deeds describe the low watermark, and most of them do, I presume these two do.
High Watermark.
High Watermark.
Is it High Watermark?
Yeah.
So, I mean, admittedly, we've not dug into it that deep, but yeah, I suspect there is some public benefit in that aspect as well.
Does the town currently have any plan, long range planning for its easement or its peace regardless of this transaction?
I've not heard of, the only, it was laid out initially with the original subdivision back in, you know, late last century, as Avenue 4, that's the natural extension of that. I don't see what purpose would be served, certainly extending it out to the dunes. At most, you would extend it to Doonefield, but there again, I'm not sure why you'd ever need or want to do that. It's more roads to build and roads to plow. In my opinion, I don't see much public value in terms of building with that road out.
Does, ah, not public works, sorry, does fire department have any, I'm assuming they access if they need to off of the next street, but do they consider that a fire lane or a route that they use to get onto the beach, that footpath?
Not to my knowledge. It's not, it's not for vehicular traffic. It's just been beaten down with foot, foot traffic.
I think they use the other side of the parking lot because...
I'm assuming they do, but...
If I go back...
It has a, it has a water.
Yeah, right here, there's a road, and we, there's actually reinforcements under this sand. It's been covered with sand, but reinforcements, you can drive a vehicle. So, public works will get to the beach via that way. But I'm not aware that vehicles, they probably could if they wanted to, but we don't ever go this way.
I really believe they get stuck. It's soft sand.
It is softer, but...
What use do you see of that property over the decades that you've owned your place? What has it been used for?
Summertime.
As a summer home. It has no insulation and...
No, I meant the property. The property for right of way. What happens there?
Avenue 4 has a lot of people that use it, and we know them all by name, and we have a block party every year, and we certainly would, you know, have them walk there.
Accession will continue.
That's the right of way they've always had, and we enjoy them.
So, your goal is to have access to...
Interested in observing a concert and kind of an easement.
So, are you, are you talking about, you talked about you wanting a lot approximately 80 feet wide, and I'm assuming that those two lots are 100 feet, approximately 100 feet. So, you're talking about keeping a 20-foot wide strip through there?
It could be done, any one of the, done in different ways.
They need 80.
We need 80. My gut reaction, and the thing is this, when I go to the beach, I walk down to the beach. I got a t-shirt, a hat, and I used to bring a ball when I was a kid. Now, when I see people going to the beach, they get a, dragging a wagon, it's a, it's a whole different world. And I always say, if I'm out all the long way, I kind of say, it's right, free ride away to the beach. And they'll say, okay, thanks. It's occasionally they'll go there, but more often than not, if they get stuck, they'll go down through the parking lot. That's, so everyone's welcome, but it's not gonna be as much, it'll be used by adjacent people, by some people in Avenue 4, most of them go down with stuff. Yeah, yeah, I could see that.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense. Those paths look like they're pretty worn down, so there must, there must be, you know, a fair amount of traffic.
Individually, a lot of folks come Doonefield and they make access.
Right. They profit over our property.
Other than the ones probably that live right in this area.
But you are saying you'd be open to some type of just minimum sort of easement?
Not a problem with that.
Did you have a question, Kate?
I think I was just gonna say to Ed, I think what you're, and correcting him wrong, I think what they're asking for is, for compliance sake, they have to have 80.
True.
But they'll have 100, so who knows? They might use 90. I mean, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Like, they have to have the 80. They're gonna get 100.
They need 80 because of what they wanna build, right?
No, per, per...
Ending build.
For, for our standards, town standards.
The town says you could have an 80-foot frontage for fire access to have a, have a building lot. Currently, it's 50, so we're in violation. So, that violation was made back in 1992.
Just the same with any beach, any beach community in the town.
Right, they can keep it, they can keep what they have, right, they can keep what they have, but to change it in any way.
Right, make any changes.
Just make any changes they need to, they need to comply with the current standards.
So, I have a question. Certainly, there's, you know, a great interest if you get to gain a few house lots. But I am fairly cognizant of, you know, this specific area has a very unique view corridor. So, my question for you is, would you still be interested in some kind of a proposal if it was with the caveat that will allow you to build to your, to your expectations within your lot, but the expectation is it's the one singular house and the rest needs to remain as open space?
Jessica, my, my thought is this, we've been there since 1940. Doonefield Road wasn't there, no place else was there, and all of those pretty shores wasn't there. We used to go to the creek and, and...
Down where the motel is, that was the last town.
And catch minnows. So, I, I, I think it would be somewhat discriminatory to say, everyone else can have done it, but you can't. You can understand that feeling. You might feel the same way, Jessica, in that, if you were in that situation.
But beyond that, the value of the, the lot with, any encumbrances or deed restrictions we would impose, such as limiting it to one home, would have a bearing on the value, I presume. So, that's another thing to consider, and that's part of what Melissa and I think would love to know about before we invest time and money and effort in appraisals. We need to give proper instruction to the appraiser as to what would be allowed on the lot, because that could, could vary tremendously if there's a second buildable lot.
What challenge do we face in doing that? Because I'm thinking of another property at Pine Point in which the view corridor is a mountain, I'm not gonna...
That was my third example.
I'm not gonna bring up specifics around that, but I would say, I just wonder that, you know, we have zoning rules, we have planning boards, we have approval processes, so why not allow them to determine whether or not that additional space should be controlled and what goes into that, rather than putting it into a deed? And I just wanna throw out there that, and I'd help this a bit, I wanna ask, why don't we just sell the property anyways if there's no future use for the town? I've never believed that the town should be in the business of purchasing land or acquiring land if there is no long-range planning for it in the first place. And to me, I'd rather have three houses that are paying very good in taxes than holding onto a piece of property that we're not using.
The only thing I would say, it strikes me, access to the beach is paramount, and they're not making it anymore. So, I think that would be the biggest loss, is removing another access point to the beach.
But you wouldn't remove the...
You have 150 square feet.
The council bid mine was suggesting that we sell it lock, suck, and barrel, and have no, retain no interest in the property. And that's certainly possible, but I think that's the downside. And there is, I don't live there, but I've witnessed it, we can certainly, survey folks and understand better, but I think there is a fair amount of foot traffic that makes their way to the beach this way. There is an access path either between this house or this one, but it's private, it's for the use of these five properties or four properties. So, folks would have to make their way, I guess, over to the lot and walk down to the beach this way. That's not...
I think you could also incorporate a 10-foot, 20-foot, you know, on the borderline, some type of passage easement, so he could still come down Doonefield and still could take a right to take down to the beach.
Perhaps.
I mean, let alone to go an extra 100 feet to then get into the parking lot. If this wasn't so close to the parking lot, that had a lot of, it would be, I totally understand your point, Tom. It's not, to me, a denial of access issue.
Or if this road is built out, it would be built, could be built, and we could reconfigure some spaces here, so pedestrians could get into the lot and make quicker, safe access to the beach that way, too. So, there's a number of ways to look at it.
Tom, what did you, you said there may be three buildable lots or three, can you just kind of highlight where you think those, those, those houses would go?
Well, under this, let's go back, this just shows a wider view. So, I'm not sure where the line would be drawn, is either on this side of the right way or that side. So, this 50 feet is built out, this roadway, so there's frontage for another lot here.
Yeah.
And permitting aside, another lot here, and of course, the Wellhand, the original lot.
Oh, okay, so they had three.
Including the Wellhand.
We're willing to give up the frontage.
I thought you were, I thought they were trying to add...
No, no.
So, you're willing to give up beach frontage?
Yes, which is more valuable to stay the lease.
And if you don't mind, beach taxes, too.
Well, I assume you'd want to have an easement right to gain access to the ocean.
Everyone should have.
Everyone should have, come on, and they...
And so, a pathway easement right of five, eight feet.
I believe eight feet is what they have all down Foothillsberry Shores. This doesn't quite show it. It is eight.
I think the Ashen Street path at Higgins is eight feet.
Yeah, that's standard, it's pretty standard.
Seven or eight feet. So, that's, that's big enough to let anybody with a cart go through and...
I think I've heard some of the historic work that I've been digging around, where a lot of the times, it's a reference of 10 feet, whatever. I'm just throwing it out there, a lot of the, you know, the footpaths that we've been looking at, we have one for on, on, off of Spregway to Scotto Marker and a few others, you know, footpaths that have been referenced quite, quite readily as 10-foot footpaths.
And they don't like, and they don't like to have them too wide, because they don't want vehicles going down.
Yeah, right.
You wanna keep them narrow so that people can't be bringing vehicles down. That's why eight is usually, right.
Yeah, I think that's that fine line of being able to mow it to keep it clear or, or do what's necessary, but not too big if you're driving down.
It's all beach grass. They can't mow.
Two, two other just comments. If you look at the houses to the left of our, of our, the fellow beside us, would love to have us cut the trees out in front, so we could see the ocean, speaking of view, and the fellow in front of him, he has to light up the trees so the air wants to stay forever. So, views are, views are funny things.
Oh, yeah.
My, my thought is this, is that the, if you go down from our spot towards the beach, you go down quite a hill, and the parking, there was no problem forever when there was a hill beside it. But, but with the parking lot there, it does in heavy, heavy rainstorms and heavy, haven't been any, any heavy sea surges yet, but they will come. We're thinking we should elevate that area, which will also protect the adjacent properties, because if flood comes in there, which is five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, it's good to have it protected as much as it can be. So, we think that that...
Degradation of the parking lot has been a problem over the years, and that it drains into our front yard.
Yeah, there's actually a retaining wall here.
Yeah, but not, not in the very front where it goes down, and fills up. So, it's, and that could be helpful, I think, for not only for us, but generally for the neighborhood.
Kate, you have a question?
So, are you saying that since the parking lot has gone in, you've, you've had to do maintenance to your lot because of the parking lot?
Actually, we haven't done the maintenance.
Oh. That's part of the problem. But it's there, there's this, like, extending issues there that, due to the parking lot being put in, has...
The, the, and you could, you're welcome to come on over sometime, but the...
Sure. Um, let's see, July...
I was there long, yes, it was a good time to be there.
Foundation cracked a little bit, and the chimney toppled over. So, it was, you know, it's an old place, what did what, but there used to be a hill beside us the same way, when you take the hill down and you're on a, a sand, a sandhill. All of a sudden, things go the other way. And then the town did put in a supporting, a retaining wall, but that was after, and it, so life goes on.
Right.
And, you know, so it, it's a lovely old spot. It's old, it's chavvy, it's inefficient, it...
The history behind, the history behind it is really neat to read.
Well, it was.
Yeah.
If you get a chance, come down to the American region, we have a picture of Pine Point in the early Wolf River Mono when that was completely undeveloped, and there was army tents and all kinds of ships down there. So, it's pretty...
Wow.
It's a pretty beautiful place, yeah.
I miss Wolf River, Wolf River, too, we had this.
Me, too.
Have you discussed it at all with your neighbors to see whether or not we're stirring up a hornet's nest?
We were actually in discussion with Ron Owens before, and when the parking lot was proposed, we wanted some sort of a buffer, but the day after Mother moved home, the bulldozers came, and we were left with property about like this, with roots sticking out the side, and a building washing into the lot and blocking so-called drains.
I, I think the question, though, Kath, is, what, how do the neighbors feel about it?
That partly answers my question.
I, I, I don't know the answer fully. There would...
We have a new neighbor on the front, I haven't met him.
And, and you can't create, you like change? Who likes change? So, there probably is going to be some adverse reaction. We have never raised an issue with anything that's happened in front. As we've looked at it around, we've seen all kinds of change. So, I think what we would try and do is we try and do it in a reasonable way to be good for people. Are we gonna please everybody? Do you use the news tonight? We never please everybody. We're, we're a funny species. It's just the nature of humanity and inhumanity. We, we tend to find things, so, so you could find some mixed reactions, and there may be a bit of a hornet's nest, honestly, I, I don't know. But, but what's good for the town, what's good long-term? And, you know, we haven't created a hornet's nest for anything that happens in front of the side, and I'm not sure it'd be reasonable to... But with no piece of adverse reaction, I would almost guarantee you that. What do you think, Jessica?
Well, that's my bin under the belt.
Nice talk. So, I, I think at this point, we should probably, I have my own thoughts, but, but...
Really?
Yeah, I have my own thoughts. I have a, a huge concern about, can I borrow your little pointer, Tom? I don't know how to work it, but I'm worried about what gets built right there.
I am, too.
And what, what comes to mind is our other walk path that we recently did, and the type of construction that went in there, and we're talking big. So, you know, I'm thinking trajectory, if we're talking three lot, I, I'm open to the concept of something that's fair and equitable between, between the two, and I am open to that concept. And I would think, which I'm gonna come back to in a minute, just find a consensus from, from you guys to give, to Tom to run with, that we're probably open to it, but we are very conscious of other transactions that have happened and, and the consequences of it. Right now, and I mean no disrespect, your hands are tied, and if we do nothing, we gain nothing, we lose nothing.
Right.
And so, you know, I, I just caution, I, I'd like a little more detail about exactly what's gonna go there.
So, would I, Jessica?
And I think the public would probably want that detail as well.
Jessica, if you look at the adjacent lot to us, there are three houses there.
Yes.
The one that's back number six is, is really a very large house, and we have noticed that I, okay, did you give the, you give the rest of the whole story?
Want to back?
The rest of the whole story about me?
Yes.
I'm a left-wing, socialistic, environmentalist, peace-nic rabbit.
And that's saying it nicely.
And the opinions of the husband are not necessarily...
We're, we're not about to do anything extraordinary to build a mansion there that is very far from, from my thoughts, my desires, and whatever trees we could leave there, we'll feel good about leaving there. And we're gonna fill the lot in there, because it just needs to be done to...
I think you have to raise up homes now, don't you?
Yeah, with the flood coming right here. And that's my, I, I guess I should maybe change my, my statement slightly, is I, I can see the reason why you, you really need to have some more wiggle room with your home, even to winterize your home. I think they're gonna be up the creek, if you will, because there's not much room to go for it.
Well, they have to go to ZBA to do anything, so...
So, I can appreciate that, that there's, you know, some need to be able to, to work a little bit.
It's a difficult hardship, our community, self- opposed.
Exactly.
I would just remind you, I mean, forever is forever, a, a long time, right?
Yeah.
And so, I know the Wellhands, I've met with them and scouted them long enough, I know they're well-intentioned and what they, what they really need to get done, but we have to have eyes wide open, and what can happen there is what's allowed under the zoning laws, unless we restrict it otherwise. And by the, the, the other extension of that is, from the town's perspective, we're gonna be here a long time, too, I suspect, and just providing for the future, whether it's a lot expansion of, or, or other public use of that front land that we can't even contemplate today.
Right.
And these restrictions aren't unusual in Scarborough, I mean, the old Orion Center, when Hannaford sold that to Main General, they put a restriction on that, that it can never be a store, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I'm sure he did.
So, a lot of things that, that are, I just wanted, when it gets into residential properties, it's a little bit, to me, it's a little bit different than economic growth and other areas. I do want to ask a question, is there anybody else that has an interest in talking about getting rid of the entire parcel on behalf of the town?
What do you mean by getting rid of?
I'm giving it away, I mean, there's fair market value to it.
Is that like the whole length of it?
The whole length of it.
Not particularly, not for me.
I mean, to get the best value from the town's point of view, and I think, these are great people, they really are, but I think our objective is to do the best thing for the town, and to get the best value for the town is probably to create a building lot that is useful. Right now, we've got a very narrow strip of land that's long and skinny and not of much use.
You can't build one.
And it doesn't sound like the public access easement is going to be much of a problem here, that everyone would want to maintain that, so that would be resolved as a part of this. But we would have what would be a very valuable building lot, and I share Sean's view that it's a building lot, sell it, take the five hundred to a million that would result from that, and put it in a fund that would benefit our beaches, because that's what I understand we often do with properties like this. If you think, if you look at properties two, four, and five, and fifty-seven, six, and seven, as you go along Dunfield Lane, there's three houses heading towards the water, and then there's three more houses, fifty-seven, six, and seven. What we're talking about is sixty-one and adding two more, very much on the same size lots, and we wouldn't end up owning anything, we would have a public access easement for everybody, which they'd be quite pleased to have, it's never going to be any more or less than that, and we'd probably be a half million to a million richer, and we'd have served the needs of some people who sort of, they probably didn't do that well when the parking lot came in. That doesn't sound like a good deal, so I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, not that it was a wrong, but sort of a right corrected. So, I favor Sean's view of it, let's see if we can make a deal and make it work for everybody and-
I think we have consensus enough to move forward with exploring a deal. I would, however, humbly remind that, you know, we have an issue of dunes in front of Pillsbury disappearing, so I don't know how beneficial or savvy it would be to create house lots in a probable problem area. I can see further back, but, you know, I don't know-
I think the environmental issues would be part of-
It's seen as part of their flood now as well, so.
It might affect the value of the property, but some is better than none, and right now we have none.
But I think we do have consensus to, you know, certainly move forward, and that's the important part, is to know that we all agree that we're willing to let staff work on a proposal with you, to bring to the floor to talk about.
The only thing I would just raise, and I don't want to be right on the phrase, but why it makes sense to have an exclusive arrangement in discussing with a landowner, is that there's something in exchange for us, other than simply monetary benefit, outright sale. If we're going to sell it, why wouldn't we open it to the market? So, I just put that on the table, I think we can justify why we should be dealing with them, because there is a hardship.
Right, there's a hardship. Absolutely, thank you.
But I just want to make sure there could be other members of the public to say, hey, why aren't we exposing this to the market? So, but I think there's ways to effectively provide that rationale.
And the non-monetary benefits that we've just discussed, is the indirect value of the whole conversation with them, rather than putting it on the market. So, it's being able to get the easements, being able to determine where maybe that third house was, sort of, far enough back and doesn't ruin the deal. I think there's a way that could-
I guess it's a follow-up question, I'm not sure of what your timeline is, Jim and Kathy, what would-
I'm seventy-six.
Yeah.
What would be ideal, I suppose, for the town and perhaps you, is to actually have a subdivision, have everyone understand how it all is going to work, where the lots are, how they're serviced, where the easements are, it'll be difficult, but we can talk about conceptually how that might work, but seeing it on the face of the earth and on a plan would be ideal.
Right.
And to the extent your timeline allows, that might be a good way to pursue it.
Sure.
I mean, we can have a neighborhood-
Discussion, sure, I think that's a reasonable way to approach it, honestly. I think people, democracy's not a bad thing, it's a little awkward, but it's not a bad thing.
True.
That's a good way to put it.
And one other thing I'm going to say, just as a thought, because put yourself in an opposition, the value of the two lots behind is a little bit reduced if there's a parking lot directly in front. So, I think it's got to be understood, should be some, are we likely to use it, are we, I like, how we want to handle the thing, and to, you know, and if you, yeah, so it's just going to be into the thought process.
Yes, I think any restrictions on all the various lots are something that will need to be considered before we have an appraisal done, really, and figure out what the real value is of all the property.
Right.
That's correct. There's some good information, some good starting points, some public outreach and a neighborhood meeting, and some-
That's something you'd like the town to take lead on?
And I can help with that?
We haven't gotten that far in the evening, but somebody that's going to likely have a communications vote.
I'd love to help you with that.
Quick question. Well, and part of this was to kind of, the scope of work to be done, and in the prior conversation about what to do with whatever, the piece that comes back, how we reconfigure that, and one question was, is it a housing lot, is it value to the town to do something with it, but the other, and I don't know how much staff work it is, but, you know, I think, Sean, you asked the question, what was going, what are the alternative uses of that land that we could make use of in the town of Scarborough? So, I don't know if it's worth a little bit of time, just to kind of brainstorm around what other things could we do with that reconfigured piece that would add value to Scarborough residents, and just give some, you know, because we said we really didn't have a plan for it, so it'd be good if there's just some thought about what we could do with that.
And, you know, that's a reasonable thought, because I think you do, there's an issue with the pipe and pavers, and what's to be done, is that large enough to do something the whole thing? And I don't know, but it's thrown into the question as well.
Melissa, do you feel like we have enough, I know there does seem to be comfortable consensus, what would be the next steps?
I think the next steps would be for the town to do whatever research has been directed to do, and we, and I guess I'd look for some direction from you, too, about what you see as the next steps. Do we go to some kind of memorandum of understanding? Do we, you know, do we come up with a, hire engineers, come up with a plan? And who pays for that, I suppose, is the question, and one of the unasked questions, too. I mean, obviously, the Wellahands are willing to pay.
I would put neighborhoods and things like that, move you to the top of that, just so that we get that feel, to make sure before we are jumped, I mean, I know we're going to, speaking for myself, I can't imagine not doing something to help them, but I think we have to be cautious of-
I think an outreach neighborhood meeting, just to hear after, you know, what is the proposal is going to be for that site. So, if you know it's one house lot, or you know it's two house lots, and they're going to be one-story, two-story, three-story, when that segment comes together is the outreach point, because then you can go to the neighbors and say, what would be your concerns with this, you know, kind of typical of maybe, almost like one of our contract zones, where is there a buffer, is there a, you know?
Yeah, it's hard, though, you know, I understand that, but it's hard to know what, whether it would be one, two, or three lots without having planning work processed.
Yeah, I suspect you could do, short of the permitting, which is potentially a big question on the front of the lot.
The front lot, right.
But I think without investing, you know, full engineering expense and effort, we'd get a pretty good assurance of how many lots could, would be capable there.
Right.
You alluded to a memorandum of understanding, we've used that as a mechanism to advance something beyond a conversation to writing, yet it's still conceptual and non-binding.
Right.
And I might suggest for your clients, they might like that level of comfort, that the council's actually taken, you know, seen the proposal a bit more fleshed out, based on the feedback given tonight. It also is another chance for the public to hear it and to react to it. The value of tonight is kind of exposing this to light, and who knows what we'll hear in the coming days and weeks.
Right.
Some people-
I think it likely to be, probably one more workshop as well, you know, you know, on, prior to coming to council.
If we pursue a memorandum of understanding, it could be, you know, one or two page at most, it doesn't need to be very complicated, that could be on an upcoming agenda.
Right.
That might be a good place to start, we can turn that around fairly quickly.
Right. Sean, I think you had a question.
Well, I mean, not to break this down too simply, I think that I would like to hear first, so there's been the recommendation or leave, not recommendation, the thought that of Mr. and Mrs. Wellahan may be purchasing the entire lot, that's a personal decision on whether or not they can take that on, and I'd like to hear at some point, not today, whether or not that's even within your scope, because if it's not, then it changes at least my direction on how I engage in the conversation, because it's something I would like to explore. And at least two other counselors have said so, but if it's not something that's economically possible, then I want to be told upfront, so I can get off that train, and get on that train, get this moving.
Sean, I think that's not an unreasonable thought, it puts it totally into private development and us doing that, and it's not a bad thought, I probably could do that, and develop it one lot at a time, and-
I just don't want to go down a path of discussing it, building something around it, and then all of a sudden, you know, you know what I'm saying, if it inconveniences you in that conversation, I don't want to do that.
Sean, you're kind, I'm very comfortable, honestly, we've looked at, so this is awkward, if the town wanted to pick up the land as well, I mean, so we're comfortable going either way, we could, it's not too late for a new career.
He has to retire it from the first, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, the yield analysis would be productive, so even if we don't, if they're not interested and willing to buy the whole piece, it would be good for us to understand what we're left with.
Right.
And in that scenario, the line might be drawn at the upper side, and we actually establish this as right-of-way, so we know that there'll be frontage for a lot if we ever choose in the future to develop it, or to sell it outright.
Really, let's say that, though, is that strip about value to anyone but the Wellahands? I mean, it seems to me that would be, that, well, I'm not, maybe I'm not-
A right-of-way, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not really advancing my clients, if I asked you that question, but, I mean, would-
There's three families that could benefit.
Well, yeah, you're right, it could go, it could go to the butter.
It could benefit this lot as well, helping my client.
Right.
That's right.
I have a title, I have a title question, that I'm assuming someone looked into, is that a paper street, and was it ever abandoned?
We don't know, no, no, we don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah.
So, that's one of the first things, I guess, before we would ever probably go to looking at engineering expenses, is figure out whether the town really has the right to sell it.
Exactly, that's why I'm asking.
If it's already reverted to the-
Right, if it's already reverted to the butters, then it's a, and it's moot.
It's an academic question, right.
I personally don't like the idea of easements. I think if we own that strip of land, and people are using that strip of land, and it's, I don't know, it's fifty feet wide, we ought to keep eight feet or ten feet of that strip all the way down through.
Feet hold it back.
Well, you could do that.
Rather than easements-
Rather than have it over someone else's property.
Over time, easements really, really get muddy, and people put up fences and stuff like that. And if we own the land now, let's keep it, and then negotiate some sort of a settlement on the rest of it, that's advantageous.
Were there any other questions, just because we do know we're-
Ed, two thoughts if I might ask on it, first, in the next thirty years, I probably will not own the land going forward, you don't know what the next guy's going to do, so I understand exactly where it's coming from. One thing about the easement, which should be there, we should make sure it doesn't interfere with the right to extend the road, though.
Right.
In other words, yeah, so that's the one thing I was-
Still looking for highest and best use.
To extend, go to a-
Basically go through the park, end of the park tomorrow.
Because otherwise, it would be a spite strip.
Right.
Was there any other questions, council questions, or? All right, Tom, so do you, Tom, do you feel you have enough to move forward with to eke out something to bring back and have a little more?
I think so, I think the best path forward to give the council another look at it when it's firmed up a bit more is through a memorandum of understanding approach, it doesn't have to be complicated or elaborate, but it's further, and certainly Melissa and I, and the Wellahands and my staff will talk further about how best to approach this.
That sounds good.
I think the neighborhood should be getting involved as soon as possible, to be perfectly honest with you, I wouldn't go too far down the road without getting the neighborhood involved.
I will say, you do have to have an idea of what you're going to tell the neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly, I don't want to say, T, what would you like us to do with this property?
Yeah, you're going to, well, we're thinking at least X and Y, and T and Z is a possibility, but at least know on the upfront to go out to the neighborhood with, these are the options that we're, you know, have available.
A component of the memorandum of understanding might be a recitation that there may be public outreach before we go to the next step.
And you're going to make that happen.
Although, yeah, I agree with it, it's important to have everyone do it, but again, Ed, if no one ever asked you before the other place was built, would you, you'd have to get, you'd tuck that, take that into your perspective, too.
But you're not dealing with the average property owner, I mean, we have this obligation, this is public land, and we need to be open.
With the neighbors, it would be respectful to the neighbors to have some sort of conceptual site plan.
Right.
Right.
That, so that, because it took us a little while ourselves to grasp what we were talking about here.
Right.
And if they saw that there were going to be three lots created, one already has a house on it, two others could potentially have a house on it, with frontage off of Doomfield that is extended out, the remaining hundred feet, at least then it's easier to talk to people about what we're proposing.
Yeah, I can envision, you know, an exhibit to the MOU that would, you know, be a magic marker showing approximately lot line, just so there's actually something to see and talk about and react to.
Right.
There are advantages to this as well, when you raise the land and protect their land from potential flooding as well, and when all of a sudden, it's not the last house before the parking lot. Those are both things that are properly done, brings some positive aspect to it.
All right, yeah, I say, well, thank you for coming down, and you're ready to open the seats as well. We look forward to hearing you back.
I was trying to keep you in, I was.
This isn't my idea.